All right, I'll call this study session Lakewood City Council for Monday, July 12th to order. The first item for discussion is to turn down the speaker. We have a joint lodging tax advisory committee meeting, and I think we're bringing in lodging tax members by Zoom or virtually in some format. Charlene Potvin-Bird, Phil Raschke is here in person, Linda Smith appears to be virtual. Come on up, Paul. And so I would defer to the committee to tell us what the work plan is for this year.
Charlene, you want to go ahead and start?
Yeah, go ahead, Linda. Who was that?
Well, I was deferring to Charlene if she would like to start.
Sure, I can go ahead and start for sure. Charlene with Travel Tacoma, marinara tourism and sports. I know that the committee again in 2022 will continue to look at venues, attractions, and different events that are in Lakewood that will continue to drive engagement as well as room nights. So I know on our end, on the Travel Tacoma side, we do remain committed to booking events as well as meetings, conventions, sporting events, and then focused on leisure travel to really help the destination of Lakewood to be known and really put those assets out there so people will engage with them and stay in the community. Linda?
Linda Smith with the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for inviting us to come in and chat with you. I wish I could be there in person. And following up on what Charlene said, ultimately it's our goal to bring people back into Pierce County. And I think that we did a remarkable job last year considering the challenges that we had. And one of the favorite projects of mine was creating a program basically just to say, we're here waiting for you. And that was the name of our advertising campaign for the year. And it was a message just saying, hey, we're here. And when you feel ready to come on out and venture out, we're here. We created two- and three-day drive tour itineraries encouraging individual travelers in particular because, you know, with the group thing, that just wasn't possible on many levels. Although with our reopening, we're really excited to see more groups and bodies coming back en masse. But we are continuing with that campaign now that we have reopened with a new message. And if you haven't been able to see our videos, I'll make sure that I get those sent to you. But this year's campaign is on the road again. And so, as you know, I like my music. And so we incorporated that. And we're creating additional itineraries to encompass more and more of Lakewood. And our first itinerary is of restaurants. Our second itinerary will be the International District, just to show more flavor and more of what we have to offer. So we're really excited about that this coming year. But I know that, I don't know if you're all receiving Dean Burke's emails, but he has really been on point with his messaging about all the great work that the Travel Tacoma is doing. I always want to call you the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but Travel Tacoma is doing an awesome job in rallying the troops and getting business back into Pierce County. And we're doing our best to funnel them, as many of them as possible into Lakewood. So that's where we're at. I know that there's many other entities and organizations that are also recipients of the lodging tax to encourage overnight stays, heads and beds, as we say, is the marker for seeing how successful we are in our strategies. And so I think the numbers have been quite positive once again, considering this past year. And so we're looking forward to seeing the numbers increase. And we're just moving right along.
I would note that lodging tax collections have been remarkably resilient, given COVID, doing large part to long-term stays by folks who are contracting with the base or PCSing. But I've acquainted with a region manager of an entity that manages a lot of different properties. And their Spokane properties were running at 5% occupancy for a while. And so we were very fortunate in that regard that we didn't have a near-zero year.
I think Lakewood and Dupont were remarkably blessed this year with the contractors in particular. But there were people getting out and about.
Less than five. How do you recall? What? Six, okay. And any comments from council? Phil?
A little background, it's been a very, 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 very fast year. A lot of things have transpired, mostly to the good. A little background, the applications for the coming year will go off on the second of August. They'll be out for about three weeks. And then on September 23rd, the lodging tax committee will actually be not the case. It would be rather interesting because last year, I think they came in at about $605,000 in requests.
Well, we funded $570,000. Thank you for the speaker.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so we had, actually, we didn't satisfy all requests. And of that $570,000, about $205,000 was returned. So the actual fund has done rather, rather well. It's going to be interesting about the requests this year because the organization, there's a group called Tacoma Creates, which was based on the tax increase in Tacoma. They came up with $4 million that they gave to 51 nonprofits for the coming year. So things are looking really, really good. And in our case, I think there may be, the pot itself is going to be rather large. Of course, we don't know what the requests are going to be, but some of the burden for Lakewood may be evened off a little bit because some of the units that we have traditionally supported got rather generous grants from Tacoma Creates.
I think we can usually count on Mary Dodsworth.
Beg your pardon?
We can usually count on Mary Dodsworth for something.
Yeah. And we're happy to, I've been told that we have three providers and three users. So the committee is very stable.
Great. And so it looks to come to council next November. Mr. Bulkey?
So a couple of questions. I mean, now that kind of everything's beginning to open again, and sports activities, I know Pierce County, and I see that every year we give money to the Sports Commission. Are we going to have opportunities to do more things like that cycle cross thing? Because that was a big one, I think, really put us on the map in a lot of ways. Do you see those type of events starting probably next year? I mean, I see people playing baseball in the park, organized baseball in the park, but larger events like that, do you see 2022 as being kind of the banner year? What's your outlook on those kind of things?
So I can answer that. We definitely see that. Just to point out a few things, going into 2022, let's say 2020, what we were projecting was 63,000 room nights collectively of leisure, sports, and meetings, conventions. In 2020, we finished one-third of that at about 23,000. So right now, we are still forecasting based on definite signed contracts as well as groups that we know that we have secured coming in. We're still at 43,000 rooms. So, you know, over half of what we've done historically, even with COVID, we are still signing contracts. And we definitely are continuing to move forward. I do know that the Sports Commission is continuing to work with US Track and Field on some future developments for cross-country. It's a national event. And then they have a couple duathlon opportunities that they're working with. So there's a number of events that sports is continuing to generate, look to bring to Lakewood. Fort Stillicum Park is huge for us. And let's see, I have some notes actually from Dean because I didn't want to miss anything on the sports side because I usually do meetings and conventions. But yeah, it looks like from his note, definitely continuing to deliver rooms to Lakewood on the sports in-group business side will be a key delivery that we make. And then, you know, the other thing besides sports, when we look at the group market, the one thing that we've been able to start to see through some geo-tracking as well as contracts signed, we have been starting to determine that there's about 5,000 rooms every year that because of compression from downtown Tacoma, the different conventions, Lakewood actually receives about 5,000 of those rooms just based on when we watch that traveler through the geo-tracking. So we definitely feel confident. In the past, when we were going into a year, a good year, for future, I just did reporting last week, we would be sitting right now at about 16,000 rooms, and we're already at 14,000. And that's even with COVID happening. So going into next year, we still have a strong base of rooms. We expect easily a lot of shorter-term regional with room nights are wanting to come into the destination. The calendar is pretty full. So some of our other venues outside of downtown Core are definitely getting additional meetings in those guest rooms because so many events were canceled within '20 and '21 that it has easily filled the rest of the calendar for '21 and into '22. So I think our whole county will be receiving benefit from that.
Great, thank you. I really do, and I want to say, you know, I wasn't here when the commitment to the McGavick Center was made, but I really do believe it was an incredibly far-sighted decision on a pass council to really build what I think is a real strong community asset. And I think, I don't speak for the council, but I'm going to guess that I speak for a majority of the council. And we say we're all about capacity building because we understand that there are opportunities and that the tourism side of Lakewood probably is not fully developed. So I would hope that people will come forward with ideas. Hopefully, you'll have some where there's capital expenditures and ideas about capacity building so that we can continue to bring people into our community. So I don't know what those would be, but I'm hoping we see some. And I'm all in favor of those.
Sure. And I can tell you with McGavick Center, we work really closely with them. Just probably within the last week, I think I've referred them four or five times for different regional events, meetings, church events, wedding. So just a number of different, that venue really accommodates a number of different groups. So it is highly recommended on our side, just so you know that.
Thank you. So maybe it's getting down into the weeds, Charlene, but you mentioned USA Track and Field. In the past, I was pretty heavily involved in that. And, you know, the cross-country venue has been built at Chambers Bay, and Fort Stillicum is recognized, at least regionally, as a cross-country venue. Is there any possibility of drawing an adult event and a youth event at the same time? Or kind of building on the synergies, I'm of the opinion, semi-informed, that neither one of those venues could take both of them at the same time. They just wouldn't work. But if you put them in conjunction, it might, there might be some economies of scale for the sponsoring organizations.
Yeah, I definitely know that the Sports Commission side continues to look at different partnerships. So, you know, we're pretty great about making sure that we're not too small for anything, like really finding ways that we can utilize our assets and those partnerships to attract larger events and to grow our existing events. Dean did mention that, I'm not sure the Fort Stillicum invite, I know that since it has started, has already doubled in the number of attendees that are participating in that. So, you know, it's the mission of our organization, along with many others. When we talk about this, we talk about TPA, Pierce County LTAC. We work with all of those entities and really combine those funds in a sense that we want to return an investment. So TPA and Pierce County LTAC, their minimum threshold is $2 for every dollar committed. And last year, we were at like $3.15. After COVID, it's still close to $2.50. So when you look at an ROI that we're able to draw in, we are focused on that. And I definitely know that from all sides, meetings, leisure, and sports, we're continuing to look at the assets that we have and find those partnerships to make sure that we can really develop and secure good events into our community that are repeat events and that will withstand a long time and continue to bring that revenue to us.
Any other comments from council? Well, we've got some work to do. I enjoy sharing that committee, although it's a statutory duty, and it takes a full day. But I thank the members of the committee for being so diligent about their investigation choices. So thanks again, and I guess we'll see each other pretty soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Small alibi. As one of the users of the lodging tax, we've spent the year at the Lakewood History Museum planning for the opening, which is coming here next week from Saturday, the 17th. But we've redesigned the museum to make it more of a draw outside the local area. And we've been working on some, we think, rather creative ideas. There may be a gorilla involved in some of this planning that is rather famous, who just had a movie out. And so, and we think where he's going to be coming to the museum, which would be a draw because he's known nationally, and people would come in and come to the museum just to get acquainted with the gorilla and his author. So that announcement, beg your pardon? He'll go ape over that, yes. And in fact, he's already climbing on the building.
I think Mr. Whelan has his hand.
But a little plug for two programs. It starts in August, August 3rd. We're going to do a program on the Medicine Creek Treaty, which led to the Indian War. And you'll learn actually where that treaty was held and where the treaty tree actually exists. And the gentleman making that presentation has also got a book out on, if you remember, the famous Donner Pass in California, what really happened there and what were the events. And so he'll be discussing that. And then on August 24th, we're going to show, we've been trying to show films to draw people to come in, show them for free. We'll do our first movie, which is a throwback movie, even though the movie was only, was just made in 2018. But it's Laurel and Hardy. And it's the untold story. And if you don't know that story, you're going to love this film because they attempted a comeback. And I don't want to spoil the film. But it'll be shown for free in our projection room. Yeah, you're all invited.
Saturday at 4:00.
Beg your pardon?
Saturday at 4:00 for the opening?
This Saturday, noon to 4:00.
Noon to 4:00.
Noon to 4:00, this Saturday, yes. Beg your pardon? We're meeting tomorrow, and then we'll get an announcement out after the meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Got something home.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further from our virtual guests? Thanks again for joining us, and we'll see you soon.
Forward to it, bye now.
We might see you sooner.
Sooner, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move to a review of the multifamily tax exemption conditional certificate for 112th Street Town Homes.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm here to present on two multifamily tax exemption proposals. But before I got started, I wanted to give a quick refresher on multifamily tax exemptions as a program, and then offer an opportunity to ask questions since it's been a while since we've had one of these before the city council. So multifamily tax exemptions are a tool that developers can use when they're looking to build new multifamily or rehabilitate existing multifamily in certain areas within the city. And the areas that are designated are selected by the city council. We call them residential target areas. And if a developer is interested in moving forward with a development in one of those areas, they would submit application with the city of Lakewood. City staff would review to ensure that it meets the criteria outlined in our code as well as in the revised code of Washington. And then we would bring that project before you, as we are tonight, for city council review and approval. If the conditional certificate is accepted and we enter into an agreement with a developer, they then have three years to complete construction of a project in order to apply for then a final certificate. Once the final certificate is approved, the following year in January is when they would start to receive an exemption on the improvements for property taxes. So the property tax would still go towards the land. They would continue to have to pay for the land, but not the improvements value. And so that tends to be for a set duration, or it's for a set duration. Tonight, we have two different projects with two different exemption timelines. And so I'll get into the details of each of those as we go through the project. But first off, is there any questions regarding the processing for multifamily tax exemptions? Okay.
Ms. Ditter?
As we were developing Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan, there was some discussion about the areas that these would be authorized to do that, and whether there was some state legislation that was going to influence any of the definitions of these programs. But the two that you're presenting tonight are sort of vested under old rules.
Correct.
Okay, to be able to go and do that. So what would be your understanding of what happens if the council or the state legislature makes some change that impacts these tax exemptions, either in terms of location or details? These two projects would not be impacted by any changes of that in that regard?
That is my understanding. These projects would be vested under the current rules and regulations.
Okay. But if the changes made it more favorable to the developer, would they have the opportunity to request to be opted into new rules?
I think we'll have to visit those once we see exactly what the changes are that are adopted and approved. But I'm sure that we'll come into compliance with any.
Because there were some discussions in the legislature about the length of tax exemptions, as to whether they could be for longer periods of time or renewed, which is not allowed currently.
For any changes for the conditional certificates, so they enter into a set agreement for conditional certificates. And there's two attachments after the resolution in your pocket this evening. The first is the conditional certificate, and the second is an agreement for the tax exemption that gets attached to that conditional certificate. So if there's any changes to those as a result of changing in legislation, we'd bring that back before city council in order to have those documents amended.
Okay, so we're essentially talking 2006 rules that govern these two proposals?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the first project, we are talking about 112th Street Town Homes. For the location, this project is located in a residential target area. On the screen, you can see that highlighted in the Lakewood Station RTA. It's right north of the St. Clair Hospital campus. Regarding size and occupancy types, this proposal is for an eight-year tax exemption. There is no requirement for affordable housing, which differs from the 12-year tax exemption that we find in the other proposal. They are proposing 14 new two-bedroom units, which meets the definition of multifamily housing, which is four or more units. And these are all for permanent residential occupancy, so not transitory housing. The units are designed to be true town homes, which means that they have individual utility hookups as well as full vertical separation construction. And what that is, is a construction type that offers additional noise attenuation as well as fire resistance between the units. And it's a construction type that differentiates standard multifamily housing from townhome multifamily housing. The units are also walk-up style, and each will be over 1,100 gross square feet with a one- or two-car garage as well as additional parking on-site. For compliance with our standards, the project is vested under 18A. However, the applicant has come into compliance with the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan frontages for the most part, with the exception of sidewalk width. So they are proposing to install the landscaping frontage standard to the Kendrick, to the Friday Street Southwest, which is the one street that they are required to make improvements on. The city recently completed the frontage improvements on 112th. And due to the lot width and site plan overall, they were able to have a maximum of a six-foot sidewalk versus an eight-foot sidewalk, which is prescribed under 18C. However, all of the vehicle maneuvering is in compliance with 18C. You find it in the rear portion of the units, the landscaping standards, as well as that walk-up style that is required under the revised 18C code, they are in full compliance with. So here is an image of their site plan. You can see that there is guest parking towards the southern property line. That is not adjacent to a street. That's adjacent to an existing parking lot that supports the St. Clair Hospital campus. Here is an image of the building elevation from the interior of the lots, showing those one-to-two car garages as well as the patio, individual decks. showing those one-to-two car garages as well as the patio individual deck spaces. And last, we have evaluated the current property tax value and current tax rates to estimate the amount of tax revenue that will be generated without this exemption versus the amount that will be generated, we estimate with the exemption. So the blue line running towards the bottom of the screen that is relatively flat is the property tax revenue. This lot is currently vacant, so there are no existing improvements onsite. And that gray line illustrates the estimated revenue for a variety of fund sources, assuming that there are 14 units constructed. The revenue after year 11, you see a bit of an uptick there. And that is when we would begin to see the revenue from the property and the improvement value for the property taxes. So at the conclusion of their exemption. And here are the numbers that go to support this chart. For next steps, this project meets all of the requirements of the eight-year tax exemption. The municipal code requires a signed contract between the applicant and the city, which is to be approved by resolution. And it's recommended that the city council review and provide comments regarding the proposal. And on July 19th, approve the resolution, the resolution to adopt the housing tax exemption contract for this proposed tax exemption. Correct. It's just the, it's just the land value for current, using current property tax rates and then adjusted year-over-year for inflation.
So what are you predicting happening in 2028?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not following your, uh, your graph or your revenue with tax exemption.
I will have to go and check my, my Excel spreadsheet. There may have been a miscalculated couple hundred dollars, it looks like. Cause I see the rest of it is incremental, about $300.
So it should change in?
Yeah, it should go up to about.
2028 or 2029?
So each year it should be going up by about half of a percentage.
About what?
Half of a percentage adjusted for inflation.
Okay, so shouldn't the revenue with tax, without tax exemption and the revenue with tax exemption track for a period of time? And then go up?
It would, it would only track for the first year and that would be because right now the, the property is vacant. And then for year two, the uptick that you see is permit costs, the $118,000. And then the following year it tracks again, which is just the value of the improvements. And then the following year, let me go back a slide. So we look at.
Why's it change at four? Why's it change at four? I thought it was eight years.
Yes, they have three years to build it. So they, from the day that we approved the conditional certificate, assuming today, they then have three years. And so we assume next year roughly they would apply for building permits, which is why you see an uptick there. Have an additional year to complete their construction, which is why you see that value is going flat again for just the land. And then it, it continues to move up for all of the fees, including that are listed here on this slide versus the other that is just adjusted year-over-year for half a percent for inflation, assuming no improvement.
So that, that would be with the completion year of 2023? So the tax year is, first tax year is 2024?
Yes. And then at 20.
The other bump is at 31 to 32?
Yes, in 2032, you see a pretty significant bump because that's at the conclusion of that eight-year of exemptions. So that's when we would also start to collect the revenue for the improvement as well as for the land value.
Okay, do we have a chart that shows what the city's share is?
Not in this, but I do.
I think when, when we're just, when we're discussing these, that's probably a very relevant. Yeah, what, a relevant topic, what, you know, what is the city giving up? What is the city receiving? We, we can't exempt that school district's portion, for example, state portion. But what we're really have decision-making authority over is the city's portion. We only charge about a dollar per thousand anymore. We'll probably be lower than that next year. So you can get some idea. It's not much of that. It's less than 20,000 probably.
Yes.
It's on the curve, 112th to 111th across from the construction company.
Yes. And Kendrick is not a through street. It also deadens right at St. Clair Hospital. So it's kind of a unique little spot.
Any questions from councils? Any, any further questions? All right. Move on to the next one.
Just one minute. There was, um, I, I think that I had an error in my spreadsheet that was on both, but I only caught it in the second one. And so Brianna is pulling up the revised PowerPoint so you can see the updated numbers that includes the, the slight difference from what you have in your packet.
Okay, while she's doing that, we can move on.
So our next project is the Toto Town Homes. It's also located in the Lakewood Station District, which is again designated by that highlighted section. For this application, here are the building elevations. They are proposing a 12-year tax exemption with 20% of the unit set aside for low to moderately low income housing. And that's based off of Pierce County income rates. They are proposing 52-bedroom units, 10 of which would be dedicated for that low to moderately low income housing. Each units will have one-to-two car garages, private balconies, separate yards, as well as walk-up units with private gates on the exterior of the lot.
Can I just ask a quick question for, for the edification of all of us? When we say low to moderately low income housing, what, what's our baseline here? What does that mean?
So low income, and this is as defined by RCW for the multifamily tax exemption, is at or below 80% of the median family income adjusted for family size. And that is as reported by the United States Department of Housing for Pierce County. That's $36,273 I'm looking at today. And so that's below 80% or moderate income household is an income of more than 80, but below 115%. And so for this exemption, they can do low or moderately low. So you're looking at a range of around $29,000 per year at that 80% of what our average income is.
What's, what's 115 currently?
I'd have to do the math. I'm not sure what 115 is.
So 80 is 36 or 36 is?
30, no, 36 is 100, 36,273. 80% is 29,018. And it says a single person, family or unrelated persons living together whose adjusted income is more than 80. So for a single person, it would be 36,000.
And then, then they define it as you're paying no more in rent than 30% of your income? Is that how that would work?
That is not included in the definition found in the RCW.
Okay.
It is that there.
That's eligibility for housing vouchers, formerly known as Section 8. Is they, they get a, they have to pay 30% of their income, pay no more. So what do these guys do? How, how do you? Somebody without a Section 8 voucher could come in and pay the full rate if it was 70% of their income if they rented them.
They would verify income. And so when, at the time that they verify income, 10% of their units have to meet this threshold. So keeping it more affordable for those 10 units by requiring an income no higher than 115% of the adjusted area income.
Based on some kind of formula because they can only pay what they can pay. Yeah, well, the, the incentive is that in order to keep the eligibility, you have to have 20% of your rent, renter population at or below that threshold. So if you have to lower rents to get those people in, that would, that would be the economic pressure to comply. Okay. Okay. So it's not taking the percentage like the vouchers do where it's like, okay, we'll just take 30% here. Could do that if the math works out. Okay. All right.
And then 115% is $41,713. This project also has full vertical separation as well as separate utility hookups. So they are that true town home.
Where's the map?
On the screen now is the site plan currently on the north half of this property. So this is two parcels and on the center of the screen, you can see there are two equal-sized parcels. Currently has the Lakeview Chapel, which is Dignity Autism Center. So childcare and chapel at that location. The southern lot is vacant. And so here is your site plan. This project has also proposed to come into full compliance with Title 18C for frontages, though they did vest under Title 18A. So they are offering a frontage type consistent with the residential street typology, 80-foot right-of-way, which will include bike lane, enhanced landscaping, as well as a wider footpath.
Let's see. I'm not so good at reading the, the site plans here. What's the parking requirement for this?
The parking requirement's only 1.25 per dwelling unit. So they do meet that requirement, though not each dwelling unit has one and a quarter parking spaces because one, some are one-car and some are two-car garages. All of the parking is garaged parking.
What about visitor parking?
The visitor parking would also be located in garages under this proposal.
In garages?
Yes, so each unit has a one- or two-car garage.
So any visitor coming has to park in a garage?
Correct.
And what's that going to do to the street frontage?
They will have to improve the street frontage at the time.
I mean for parking. I can see at night people going out and parking on 108th Street. And then visitors coming and thinking it worse. Well, that's what happened at, for acres.
Yeah, on-street parking is specifically prohibited in Title 18C in Lakewood Station District.
But we can write a rule, but it doesn't mean it doesn't happen.
Sure. So under our standards for the code, it, we do require the 1.25 per dwelling unit. We do not just distinguish that it has to be allocated as covered or uncovered. They do surpass the development regulation with the amount of parking that they are offering in garage spaces. And they do not have any guest parking that is not garaged.
So somebody comes to visit and they're visiting somebody who, I go to see my mother. My mother has a unit with a single-car garage. There's no place for me to park.
That, that is correct under this proposal.
Why?
I think, so earlier iterations of this proposal, they did display on-street parking. And they were working with the city for a period of time to move towards an on-street parking option. However, with the adoption of 18C, that option was no longer viable. And so they maintained their number of units in the existing site plan with the garage units and removed all of what had been the surrounding on-street parking.
Yeah, you know, and fortunately because sound transit has siphoned off the public appetite for funding transit, I probably won't see a robust system here in my lifetime. And people aren't going to be visiting taking the sounder. But we're being asked to subsidize a problem we can recognize right now. Be easier to fix before you subsidize it.
Yes, that's the amount of open spaces required under 18C.
And they're providing for the number of stalls, right? 75, 86, it looks like. Yeah, over providing. Well, you refuse to rent to a one-car garage to somebody who has two cars. Right. Well, here's the challenge. I mean, we, we ask these guys to provide affordable housing and they stretch what they can for the site plan to make it work. And so then if you cut away two units to have parking on site, you lose two units of affordable housing. So it's, you have to kind of bite one of the bullets, one way or the other, I think. We do. Challenging.
Under the turtle, so part of what makes multifamily tax exemptions unique is that the council can provide design suggestions in order to offer a superior design currently under Title 18C. On these roads, the residential roads as defined by our subarea map, no. There is an option in Title 18C for parallels on-street parking, but not on residential roads. So we could open that as an option for the developer potentially. Or another option is that right now they are providing four-sided architecture. And the developer did indicate that if we were to reduce that requirement to what's required under 18A rather than what's required under 18C, they may have additional room on their lot in order to have additional parking. As you can see as well, there is a lot of green space. Each one of these units has individual yard spaces. They're also providing for the full amount of frontage prescribed under 18C. The developer is here this evening and I'm happy also to follow up with them after this meeting to discuss the concerns before we bring this back next week.
So this is one of the reasons I'd like to see the, the financial impact with respect to these projects charted with respect to what the city is giving or receiving. Because if, in, in theory, if we were giving somebody a $50,000 credit over eight years, it's not much. If you're giving somebody a million-dollar credit over eight years, maybe they can buy something next door for some lost street park. But in making the decision, we really should look at what the financial impact of the city is and, and in discussing with the developer, then you need to know what's realistic for them. So I, I don't know that it's particularly relevant with the school districts. Mr. Bransdottir?
So I, so, so I do understand that it's week, it would be possible if requested for the city to look at providing a spot around this perimeter where on-street parking could be allowed. Now, you know, and I'm looking at the map, I wouldn't want to do that on Kendrick Street because that is a street that we were projecting going all the way from the station, past this, all the way on down to the, to the, to the Hope Academy as, as, as a, as a potential, you know, green street to be able to go through and do that. But as the developer, when they were told what the rules are in the station district, raised this as a concern to them that, or are we the ones raising it as a concern?
They have also raised the concern.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, you know, I would venture to say that, you know, in this diagram, maybe one hundred and ninth street, there's one hundred and eighth street is, is an arterial and it's not realistic to do it there. And it's not realistic to do it on Kendrick. But, but the, the street forty-seventh and, 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 and one hundred and ninth, maybe there is some potential to relax requirements to, to do that. But with respect to the mayor's looking at impact about, and we can look at what's the impact of what is the city giving of? And what is the developer gaining? But the developer is gaining not only the impact to the city, but he's gaining the impact to the school district and to the fire district and the library district and, and, and the county, I suppose, and, 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 and others. So if the process were to be that a, two units, I would just use two as a number, need to go away to provide a guest parking lot somewhere on the site to be able to go and do that, that would that be something that would? I, I tell you, would that be something that would be directed by a hearing examiner? Or is that something that we could put into the multifamily tax exception certificate as a, as a, as a requirement for this body to approve it?
I, I think the way that that would move forward is we would go back and say, without an amendment to the site plan that illustrates non-garaged guest parking, we will not apply or approve the conditional certificate. At that time, they can choose to move forward with this project as is because it does comply with all of our development regulations as they are written, but not receive the tax exemption. Or they could choose to come into compliance with what the council is requesting.
So similarly to the last time we were considering one of these certificates, which was a project in the downtown area. And again, the issue there was parking. Issue wasn't quantity, it was location of the parking. And because they didn't want to do it in accordance with what the requirements we were putting in the downtown sub-area plan, that was a certificate that we didn't issue. Okay. And so that, you know, that, 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 that's our option. And then the developer assumes the, the risk of having parking influences the marketability of those units. Thank you.
I mean, I'm fine if we want to kind of go back and, and see, but I, I am concerned about being consistent. We went through this process in the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan and we made the decision to say, in light of James Guerrero and Planning Commission's review on no parking requirements, if we compromise and said, how about, was it one and a half per unit? I think is what we came down to. And so this one does that and actually exceeds that a little bit by, it's like seventy-five versus eighty-six. See, the only I want to point out here is having kind of worked with some people who did a project in town where mashing it and overdoing the eight-year versus the twelve-year. When you figure the impact on reducing or, or creating affordable units, you're talking about it, you know, pick a number, decrease maybe in rent of four hundred to five hundred dollars a month per unit. You multiply that out by the ten units, by the months, times twelve years. It's a significant hit that developers taking to bring to market affordable units, especially given the cost of construction. So I would hesitate that we go beyond what we've already decided in terms of requirements because then we're having this thing in the marketplace. Well, how consistent is the city of Lakewood? They say one thing and then they want another. I don't like that. So we got to be consistent.
When this project was originally proposed, the developer had, had proposed to put in diagonal parking on the residential streets and taking advantage of excess right-of-way. And because of the underlying requirements of eighteen C, we said that was not allowed. So we came back with this design, but this design does not take away the opportunity for parallel parking on those three streets. Now, is that, you know, off-site part, is that off-site parking for visitors? Probably not, but that's what typically would be required in our code. But that is one way to resolve this is using the existing right-of-way for parallel parking adjacent to the property with no changes in this design. Yeah. Well, if you have an existing right-of-way that has available for parking, why not?
And we don't have, we can exercise that discretion without changing the code.
I believe so, yes. Let me go back and check a few things with the site plan, but we'll bring this back to the city council and verify this.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Would that be, would that be room to park on both sides of the street? Is the street wide enough for both sides parking?
Let me go, let us go back and take a look, council member, then I want to be giving you a, a good answer. I just haven't been doing this off the top of my head. I don't, I feel uncomfortable.
One thing I point out, Mr. Bueller, is, you know, we, we have Portland Avenue until it come that looks challenging with parallel parking within the public right-of-way. So I would just add that.
Right.
We don't want it to look like a cluster in our neighborhoods out there. We want to provide parking where we can. And maybe in your review, you look at maybe designated areas. So it's not like a whole right-of-way.
Okay. Parking pullouts would probably be a possibility that we can take a look at to meet the potential for visitor or guest parking.
Yeah.
And keep in mind, we do have some flexibility here because this was, project was vested under eighteen A versus eighteen C. So let us work this out a little bit and come back to the council. But again, what we were trying to do was bring forward a project to the council that complied as most, as best we could with eighteen C.
Right.
Because that's what we thought the council was, was asking for. And my thought was that the council would be more apt to approve the multifamily tax exemption if we compelled the developer to move it forward under eighteen C.
I think they've done a pretty good job.
Yes.
It looks, I mean, the design aesthetic, you know, that was an issue with another project in town. It looks quite good. The fact that they have garages, I think is a very positive thing. I think the green space, if you will, I think is one of the things that was concerning to us, having internal parking as opposed to external. I think they've done a lot of those.
We, we may end up being in a position where we're bringing forward one multifamily tax exemption, the first one at your next meeting. And this one may take a little bit more time.
Just kind of a note for council, if we're going to encourage this development, which we have by what we've adopted already, this type of development, and this is one of several, we're going to have to bite the bullet and recognize that we have a park desert. Kids can't play in the street or the parking lot or the driveway. I've seen that in California where high-end, for what we consider high-end price here, places that are three-quarters of a million to nine-hundred thousand dollar townhome condos have zero clearance to the, from the street to the garage and absolutely no place for the kids to play other than the roller blade or on traffic. I think we need to see if there's some option in the area that's similar to what we did in Springbrook and look at it long-term. Anything?
I guess what point out to the council, I think we have two more concept proposals being submitted for the Lakewood Station District after these two. So there are more projects coming in the lake, in the, this station district. I'm, I'm a bit surprised, but there's a lot of interest.
So with that, we will come back before council with some design alternatives. And I'm, I'll conclude the presentation regarding the financial impacts until we have that fully vetted, that I have the correct unit counts to put into those figures.
Is the chapel actually a church?
It was converted, I believe, two years ago to what's, does Dignity Autism Center. And they provide counseling and services, social services for children with autism.
So is a, either a church or nonprofit would, did have a tax exemption at this point?
It does not currently. It did previously.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move to Colonial Plaza Public Art Update.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council members. I'm here with members of the Public Art Subcommittee and Arts Commission, Lonnie Neal and Earl Borger. And they're going to present the PowerPoint, but I'm just going to start by giving a brief summary. Back in December of twenty twenty, the city council gave direction to select a new artist. Yeah. We'll all do this together. So Lonnie and Earl.
Hi. Happy to be here.
So also a new process was developed. So we decided to use public rosters, the two public art, art rosters in Washington State, as opposed to doing a request for proposals. We also had a new selection panel, which is the Public Art Subcommittee of the Arts Commission comprised of two council members as well as a youth council member. And then kind of a microcosm of the community of business owners and the members of Lakewood. And then in May, the council increased the budget to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to account for the cost of engineering, installation and restoration, which was up from ninety thousand. Twenty artists were selected from the public art rosters based on their art portfolios. And of those twelve opted in, we reached out to all of those twenty and twelve opted in for the project. And they in turn submitted ten slides and a resume based on the type of work we were recommending. Of those six finalists were asked to go to an onsite orientation. And following that orientation, they were interviewed by the Public Art Subcommittee. Three finalists were then selected and those artists were the Hadad Druigan team, Peter Requiem and John Fleming. We then paid them a fifteen hundred dollar stipend to develop two designs. They submitted those designs June twenty-third and in the last week of June, we interviewed them all. And they presented what their scope of work was along with those two designs. And that was to come in at a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And the reason it was a hundred and forty thousand dollars was because we had to take the fifteen hundred dollar stipend out of the budget. And we also wanted to leave a little room, just room in the budget for anything that might come up. They talked about the research they did. We asked them to visit the Lakewood Historical Museum. We asked them to provide specific sketches and designs to tell us what materials they used, what fabrication method they used. The installation method they used, their lighting proposal, a draft budget and timeline. So when they presented, they each had an hour and they, they did that. So at the July sixth Arts Commission meeting, we met onsite at the Colonial Plaza. And there was consensus that John Fleming, his design called Gateway Arks was the top selection. So the Arts Commission is now forwarding this recommendation to city council to approve entering into a contract for the Colonial Plaza art with artist John Fleming. So before the PowerPoint, I'll just tell you a little bit about why they chose John Fleming. He submitted two very large iconic gateway pieces that you can really notice from the street. He described them as guides who greet you. That one is forty-two feet long and the other is thirty-two feet long. So very substantial pieces. This artist was able to distill the essence of Lakewood down to the lakes and a sense of belonging. And he incorporates that into his art. And you'll see the lakes on the front of the large ark. He addressed cultural diversity, which was also in the criteria through a genuine community engagement process where the public actually produces art that's then installed within the artwork. The Public Art Subcommittee felt like he really maximized the budget by creating a clever design that doesn't require a footing. A footing can be the majority of the budget and you don't see it. So that was appreciated. So the next steps are if council concurs with Arts Commission recommendation of Don Fleming, a contract with milestones would be developed. Now through September would be the flushing out of the design. So it's not a final design. We would all give input to him and he would really flush that out by December. In October, we'd hope to have approval of the final design. And in his particular timeline, his completion date was summer of twenty twenty-two. Now I'm going to turn it over to Earl Borger and Lonnie Neal to go through the PowerPoint. So you can see all the final three designs, two designs from each of the three artists.
Okay. And then I take it this is just time. Okay. I'm Lonnie Neal. Thank you for having us. Can you hear me now? Okay. I'm Lonnie Neal. Thank you for having us. So I'll introduce the two first artists. And so we, Hadad Druigan and then Peter Requiem are the two that we, they're fantastic, but we opted on John as our final. So Hadad Druigan had a proposal to do sort of these big tall prairie flowers that they had really touched on. Looking at the city of Lakewood and the, the oaks, the prairie fields. And it's kind of a rough concept, but, you know, trying to have these big steel pieces that are footed in the ground. They would have some movement and then there's some lighting and colorful pieces at the end. Interject with me if I'm not representing that correctly. Hadad Druigan also touched on the Gary Oak, and this is kind of an amazing piece. This is a design sketch, but the idea of a big Gary Oak leaf. This is steel, stainless steel colored acrylic. Yeah, and lots of reflective colors and whatnots. And then Hadad Druigan had a final piece that was what they called the lantern tree. And it was an, it's a fabulous. And it was an it's a fabulous concept. It kind of touches on the Gary Oak. I don't know if we have a slide of it with the the hands. Yeah, yeah. So it's in theory like we could do something with hands from our communities, which represent the Gary Oak leaf leaves and they would be reflective on the ground. Very interesting piece and could have a lot of movement to it. I have a lot of reflection on the ground. Yeah, it does anybody should I open it up for questions? No, okay. Beautiful pieces. So Peter Requiem touched on, and this was new to me because and I've lived in Lakewood for a long time. I didn't realize Motor Avenue was based on, there was a motorway there. So he came up with this concept to have a cast bronze piece on concrete or block plinth of the motorway piece. So this is probably three feet at the front and, you know, six feet at the back, you know, sort of full scale motor speedway piece that arguably is kind of interactive. You could kind of come and sit and and stand with it. Peter also really touched on the theater that's at the Colonial Plaza and came up with a theater stage setting. So there's, you know, a table, a chair, you know, a coat rack. Very interactive in a intimate sort of sitting. If you were in the Colonial Plaza that you could interact with that and there would be a light in there would be lighting in the end table lamps, for example. So in the evening it would cast light and you could be sitting with it more intimately. But we stepped into John Fleming because we thought the gateway piece was what was needed.
Hi, I'm Earl Borger and I'm the Arts Commission, of course. And so all three of the artists did a fantastic job of presenting a lot of different pieces, but John Fleming, we thought hit on a lot of the marks that the city was was looking for in this piece. He touched on the essence of Lakewood, of the lakes and belonging. And he kind of, you know, captured our unique landscape and wanting it to portray it in his his sculpture as well. So he presented two different concepts. The first one was plaza benches with the lakes actually highlighted on each bench, as you see right there. And then on the second one, he did the gateway arcs. There's another view of the plaza benches. That's his first concept. Very interactive detail and the plaza benches. The plaza benches are fabricated from large plates of metal with bronze top surface. And they're about an H thick, thick, H event thing and bonded to like a half inch thick stainless steel or aluminum. Each footing has an eased bottom surface to prevent any damage to the pavers and they're all set in place with a forklift. His second concept is the gateway arcs. And what was attractive about the gateway arcs to us, it was they were large and very iconic to kind of beckon people to the Colonial Plaza. And so the artwork accomplishes two things. First, it defines where we are as a place. Secondly, the art is aesthetically pleasing and graceful. The graceful curve includes a pattern of the lakes in the design, but the overall concept from the design is an early Raku ceramic work and that's where John Fleming incorporated and kind of took his this piece from his inspiration from it. The two arching shapes would be placed on either side of Motor Avenue as bookends, guiding one into the Colonial Plaza, as you can see right there where he's highlighted that. The smaller arc on the south side is 32 feet long by four feet high. The larger northern arc is 40 feet long and approximately seven and a half feet tall. Each arc is rolled from one inch thick mild steel. The gateway arcs, the mosaic patterns are laser cut into one inch thick mild steel. The large plates are rolled into two graceful curves. The arcs will be designed to be self-supporting on grade without any concrete footing. So he, as Sally had stated before, he really maximized the amount that was dealt in the budget. Sculptures rolled from long, narrow steel blades into graceful curves. And he's achieved this through a manufacturer in Portland that can roll steel up to three inches thick in some different capacities that he used before. Here's a couple of different examples where he's engaged the community. This is something that he's built into his template of each piece of art. So for the top one on the left hand side, that is called Multiplicity and that's done in Tukwila. What he did was he had a workshop where he invited the community to come in, took a whole bunch of different stencils with paint and they put and put all these stencils on on the 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 fabric. And then they came down and they they basically just kind of had went to town and decorated the whole entire thing themselves onto this this steel. So then he kind of cut it into the long strips and therefore represented the community itself. The bottom left hand one was done in Vale, Colorado for an elementary school. He had a two day workshop where he invited a whole bunch of students to come in and they wrote about what their community meant to them, also with some pictures as well, and used incorporated that into the long reads for that piece of art. Then the bottom right hand one was Cedar Rapids, Iowa. This was done during the pandemic, so he had a challenging aspect of how to engage the community. So he reached out to all the local artists where they uploaded their photography of the landscape of Cedar Rapids onto his website and then he printed all of their photos onto acrylic tiles and then hung this piece about, I think it's like a 30 foot long piece in their community center. And then lit it up with a whole bunch of different LED lights as well. So his proposal involved on how to engage our community. And Sally had a great thought of maybe using the 25th anniversary to where he could engage a lot of the different, you know, people in our community to where they could write down what Lakewood means to them. As far as whether or not maybe a drawing or even doing some sort of literature about what their community means to them. So he would hold this workshop, whether it be one day or two days. And what's what's interesting, he's he's done this before, so it's not like it's something new. So the process would make people feel like they're a part of the art and belong. And to belong means to feel like you're a part of the community, to be seen, to tell the story, to say who you are. To belong means participation, participation and the feeling of being wanted as well. All of these stories would be then be digitized, rasterized and ultimately etched into stainless steel plates and attached to the inside of the triangular windows of each one of the artwork. One thing that really attracted John about our community is that he took the inspiration from the artwork of the 25th Anniversary Art Contest and suggested that some of those pieces can be included into his piece of art as well. Inside the gateway arcs would tell these stories of the community itself and they can be attached in a way that allows movement. The stainless steel plates would flicker and dance when a breeze would be picked up. As to address lighting, he had a couple of different clever concepts that he's used in some past pieces. And as you can see, like the movement of the one with right there that he did at Cedar Rapids, Iowa, of course. And he did that lighting up with LED in some certain capacities. In Seattle, he did the Western Casser Tapestry at Pike Place Market using LED lighting in that area. And then I think in San Francisco, on the right hand side, top right, he used LED lighting as well. Then in two different areas, as you can see in the bottom left and in a skyscraper in Seattle, in the bottom right in Lakewood, Colorado, he used a reflective material somewhat like a stop sign, right? And how did they, what did he use to use that for that?
Well, it's so the reflective material is I'm not sure what it's technically made out of, but like like the reflective material on roadways is like little glass beads and paint or something. So your headlights as you're driving by would make make it become interactive all of a sudden.
It's the car would be the activator and therefore creating a different pattern.
That intersection of Motor Avenue is, yeah, it it could be super effective, very effective.
And our and our hope is that we would actually be able to use a little bit of money in the budget as well to highlight to light up the Gary Oaks groves right behind the large piece of sculpture as well. But this this proposal that he did with the reflective material was kind of an ingenious way to make it a very unique piece. Because as you can see right there, it's like the very bottom left hand corner, that piece isn't lit up. It's it's actually just using ambient lighting, you know, as to activate it. And his proposal came down to a solid $140,000 and it's all marked out in in right here. So that's why for some reasons and more, this is why we decided to go with John Fleming for this this iconic piece that will be set into Lakewood for the, you know, the Colonial Plaza. Thank you.
Questions for the presenters? So I know Ms. Ms. Bell.
I just, yes, I I think it's great. I love it. My whole point, which we talked about was the lighting part, which you brought up. And I wondered if you could touch on that a little bit more for the council to let them know what possible plans would be for that.
You want to go?
I like the reflective.
Well, we're hoping to use a combination of of both of the concepts to use the reflective material because that would be not only a low cost, but it would be an attractive addition to the piece itself. But then to use the LED lighting is very affordable and to use the LED lighting to actually light up the oak groves behind the piece as well. Therefore, creating kind of like an entire stage for the piece rather than just the piece itself.
The city council members made it very clear, as it is to the Arts Commission, to increase the amount of lighting from this original concept and to perhaps light up the the edges of the lakes or light up the bottom. But we, I think the idea was to make sure to let the artist know that as he flushes out the designs that that's a critical, important piece to to manifest more lighting in the artwork.
So so Mr. Whalen has always advocated water features, so I hope I'm not throwing cold water on this. I like the, I like the concept. I like the visual aspect of it. I am very concerned about text from the community. Big text, etching text in from hundreds of stories. Who gets to choose what goes in, what doesn't? If somebody submits something in a foreign language, do we have the ability to have that translated to make sure it doesn't have three different meanings, some of them inappropriate? If we leave something out, are we guilty of government censorship? Does somebody want to put a political message in? How do they hide a message? Visual arts controversial enough. But if you incorporate hundreds of people writing things and you're going to permanently etch it there, what if it's not appropriate a week from now? I mean, who's going to, who's going to fake it's a microaggression because you said somebody's tall? And I'm not tall. It's I I'm just really concerned about text and the permanency. You know, if you, if in the arts, if you have a presentation, it's a play or a presentation on a book, people may not like the content, but it's it's fleeting and they don't have to come. Here is the city memorializing it. So I think it's it's something we really need to look at closely. But that cold water being tossed, I'd like the piece for whatever that's worth.
Sally. And that's, you know, that's a very, very valid point. And John Fleming, he's he's done this before, so that would be an interesting thought to actually pass along to him to actually see how, what your comment, how that's worked in other different areas, different capacities that he's done before. Because this is something that he's just like built into the framework of his designs to engage the community. So that would be, yeah, that would be very interesting to actually kind of question him on how that's been received, you know, by the the public and where he's done that before. Because I think from a couple of different places, people have come up and literally like thanked him for his piece of art because they were included in the piece of art. So.
Just blocking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you who aren't metallurgists, what is mild steel? And thank you to the beauty of the internet and how I know and I've learned. I've learned something actually fairly technical. Would you like to tell us or?
I'm curious what Wikipedia is telling you.
Well, actually, it's on the metal supermarkets website and it says that it's also known as low carbon steel. The range is carbon typically found in mild steel. It is typically more ductile, machinable and weldable than high carbon and other steels. However, it also means it is nearly impossible to harden and strengthen through heating and quenching. It also means there's very little carbon and other alloying elements to block dislocations in its crystal structure. There you go.
That sounds right.
They lost me there. Generally resulting in less tensile strength than high carbon and alloy steels. Mild steel is also a high amount of iron and ferrite, making it magnetic, AKA not as hard. What is it? Not as hard, not as hard. Yeah, it's softer. Yeah, okay.
That's why they can bend it. Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want, you don't want to build a condominium out of it.
But you had some interesting concepts.
Big, big, big and big and heavy. Yeah. So one of the questions that came up when we were talking as the Arts Commission is if somebody came and tried to scratch up the surface because it's it's not a finished surface. Mild steel generates a rust coating and that is actually its finish. You don't want to cover it. You don't want to try to clear coat it with, you know, polyurethane or something like that. So steel naturally creates a rust coating and that prevents it from deteriorating any further. So the question came up with regard to vandalism and, you know, if some kind of vandalism happened, you would sand that off and it would naturally re-rust itself and it would that that's the state that mild steel wants to be in and it'll outlast all of us by far. Great. I beat you.
Sylvie is on the Arts Commission. She's a photographer and she lives in Redmond or lived in Redmond. And John Fleming did a piece called Redmond Erratic based on the the glacial glacial formations that had been there so long ago. It was this material and, you know, in a photo, it didn't look like much. But she said it's absolutely amazing and the community loves it. The community interacts with it. And as a photographer, she loves taking pictures. And as a photographer, she loves taking pictures, um, by it, with it, and people take pictures in front of it, which is, of course, something that we really want with this piece. And she said, actually, after they put it in, and then after the fact, they added lighting, like seasonal lighting, to it, and that, that was, um, really transformative as well. But it was nice to have someone on the Arts Commission that, that is knowledgeable about his, uh, pieces of artwork that are out there, and how they're received by the community, which is so important.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think another point to give a little bit of context is that we had talked about doing, not a plaque, but some sort of explanation next to it that may speak to the pieces that get, again, I know we haven't, you haven't fleshed out how those pieces would get chosen. I don't know if you've given very, very specific criteria, things that could really narrow it down, so there'd be less room for interpretation. But there would be something next to it that would explain what those pieces are that are inside, flickering.
Right. Like interpretive dance.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Graffiti, how easy would that be to be cleaned off?
Uh, you know, it would, it could be sanded or, um, probably pressure washed off, yeah.
And it wouldn't damage the surface?
No, and even if the, even if the rust disappears for a little bit, it'll re-rust itself, yeah.
The tinta will come back.
It just, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, John did a fantastic, yeah, and John did, you know, honestly, I complimented, complimented John on, um, not needing any footings for these pieces. They can literally just get set in place. And honestly, if there's any construction that needs to happen down the line, you know, with whatever sewer, you know, water lines, whatever, those pieces can just literally get picked up, moved, and get put back. He did, really, it's complimentary to him, thank you.
I mean, he really maximized the amount that he, that he could use.
You know, where it should, the book ends, can you see if you can find that? I did, I, I neglected to say that the location there, the north location is owned by the city, and the south is part of an easement. And so we would need, um, an amendment to the easement, uh, for Colonial Plaza. And they've indicated that they're supportive, but they wanted to see the final design once City Council has made a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, this might sound funny, but, um, have you had anybody do a safety review? And let me tell you what I mean by that. I'm curious about the lighting issues with cars, if they were reflective, and you drove around that corner, and suddenly things were flashing, and, I mean, I can see where you're walking down a street in Seattle, and you're walking, or you're inside a building that was beautiful with a reflective light, but I would, I would be very curious to know if there might be an issue with driving. And then also with the, um, with the height, I can, and the little, the notches, can you actually stick a foot in there? I can't tell. Can you climb it? I mean, it sounds like it's sturdy, and it's heavier than god knows what. People can climb anything.
I did ask that about Redmond Erratic, because it's much bigger than these pieces. And there, there hasn't been any safety issues today, but that's certainly come, come up. I think that'd be a wise thing to do, yeah.
And I think that would be true with any piece of art. I mean, both things can be climbed.
True, um. So the graffiti was also an issue. I was curious about how difficult it might be to clean those center parts with the, with the art pieces in them.
It would be the same.
It'd be the same, just sand it down, okay. Um, my last piece is, my last concern, it doesn't sound like it might be shared by the rest of the council, but when we hold events in this area, um, this actually blocks the view, and it, and it adds a separator between that nice big open space with green, green grass and trees. And so, um, to me, at seven and a half feet tall, particularly the, the larger one, it, it seems off-putting, rather than welcoming. I've been driving that, I've been driving that road a lot lately, so, um, so it's just, it's interesting to me. I, I, that just seems to me the way that it, that it hits. And then if we're having events, I don't, we haven't had a lot of events since it just, it opened, uh, and then we went into lockdown. So, um, I was curious about your guys' thoughts about that. I almost feel like it would be a place that families would want to go and sit next to, or, you know, if, if, if there's, yeah, if there's an event that's going on, that you're gonna be there for a couple hours. I mean, if I had little kids, I would go park it over next to that, gate, one of those gateways, and sit with the kids, and maybe there's a shady spot, and so from, yeah, I see it, I see it the opposite of that.
I mean, and I think because of the size of it, I think it would beckon people to get out of their cars and park in the Colonial Plaza to go interact with it and to actually see it, um, rather than just ignore it, or think of it as, as a divider of some sort. And then in the process of doing that, they could meander in the park and hang out in the park as well.
And also, if there were events, don't you guys have the lighting that you were planning to do, like, so other things to draw your eye down Motor Avenue to show if there was an event? So it would be kind of the curves on the front, and then they would have like that string lighting going across the street for an event, if it was in the evening. But that might bring a little bit more attention to the space.
The artist talked about, uh, it, uh, drawing people in, because, you know, someone in their family may have, and he didn't, wasn't just talking about children, he, he's interacted with people aged five to 85, you know, doing the artwork, but that it would draw them in, they'd park, and they'd go read and look at the individual artwork, um, placed within the triangles. And we were just really looking for that balance. You know, some of them were so amazing, but they were just too far in that you couldn't see them unless you actually drove in, and this kind of had that nice balance of being noticeable, you can see it. Also, you can, it's enough to draw you into park and interact with it. Um, so it had a little bit of both.
Then, also, speaking of the, the tiles that would be inserted into the triangular areas that would kind of be reflections of our community, I mean, they would be stationary and kind of have a pivot point, but they could also be removed as well. So to your point, if something did become a different thought later on down the line, that tile could actually also be removed and replaced.
Well, I, I do like the design. I think that it, uh, mostly, I think it's a design that people seeing it once will remember it, and will in fact tell other people about having seen it, to be able to go on often. I think that's, uh, that, that, that's, that's good for the community, and it goes on off. I, I liked the idea that we can use some of the artwork from the 25th anniversary art contest, and maybe even some that we have upstairs from the 20th anniversary that we have still on the walls here in, in, in the city hall. Uh, and that it's, that's gonna allow us for young people to have, and, and a diverse group of folks to do that. We had some artwork from Gimhay, one of our sister cities. We might ask the, the other three sister cities, if they each have a child, submit something, or a number of them to choose from, to do that, which really wouldn't, could be done in the timeline that, that, that was envisioned. And as to the height of it, uh, at least right now, it would obscure the view of the QFC building.
You know, I think a consideration is, I know this seems like a very salt-of-the-earth piece, something that's really accessible to people in the community who may not be familiar with art. It engages them at the grassroots level, and there's so much research that's been done on art, that if you can do that, that it piques people's interest, and then they slowly want more and more art. You know, some of these, they had a Drogen team, it's so beautiful and glorious, but, um, maybe not as accessible to the entire community, where, uh, what might not be, you know, there's always that idea of why are you spending money on art when, you know, we're hungry? Or, you know, this is just a little more salt-of-the-earth artwork, I, in my opinion, yeah. Well, you know, we were, we were saying, you know, we all love all the pieces, and the racecar is so amazing. It's just, it's just what is the right time, and what is the right place? But we did feel at some point, they would, they could all be there, eventually.
I'd just ask for more money for all of them.
Thank you. Anything further, other questions from council? Next step? Approval?
Yeah, the next step is, um, yes, um, the next step would be to, let's see, what I have in my notes is.
I think, I think because of the dollar amount, we need to, we need to approve the contract.
Right, we would develop the contract, and then.
Yeah, that's, that is scheduled.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you very much.
That's right.
And we, uh, we move to a Parks Capital Improvement Program update with Ms. Dodsworth. Greetings.
Ms. Hassan? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, City Council.
You did catch that I'm advocating creating another park.
Yes, well, you know, just to follow up with that.
We'll give you a week to plan.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, maybe a week and a half, it's been kind of crazy. But, um, the great thing about that is we really haven't done any work in that kind of oak tree area, and so enhancements can be made that would celebrate that artwork there, um, that would make it more accessible, and, um, also, maybe, you know, I could see people performing on the backside while other things were going on, so I could really see it. And of course, a safe deal, I mean, that's a great point, because line of sight, height, all those things we'd want to consider when it's near a roadway, so we would make sure, and, you know, as a Parks person, it's like, how far can you fall from seven feet? I looked at it and thought, oh, I'd wanna climb that. And, um, so what's the fall zone that you might have to create? And is there any, you know, with the, your head getting stuck in a hole? So all those things would be considered, and, and the art, well, that's what they do. So, uh, we'd have the art, we'd make sure that those conditions would be just considered through the development stage. So those wouldn't be considered before we voted on it. I, no, he's gotta still flesh out the design, and that, I mean, we would not put anything in the city that wasn't safe. I mean, we would make sure that all those elements were considered, and that were addressed. Not yet.
The Donlin's somewhere else.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, up in Kendrick area, where we're creating high-density, and, and, it's kind of a Parks desert, and there's no place for kids to play.
Agreed, we could take a look at that, at the, we, it, I don't think anything really specifically identified in our legacy plan, but, you know, we're always updating that, so we can take a look at that. I would agree with you.
Just, you know, contemplating as these, these high-density developments come forward, that they're gonna be stacked next to each other, and if we're gonna look for some space to, for public space.
Safe place to gather.
Do it before they're all built out.
Great idea. Well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to come in and share sort of our Parks CIP update. As we know, it's our 25th anniversary, and Parks do create community. We know that, we learned that, we saw that, and how important they are to our community. One of the great things is, is that it does give us a chance to sort of come back and reflect on all of the improvements that we've made. You know, we're always so busy, they're starting something, we're in the middle of something, we've ended something, we're applying for resources. So it really does make us, lets us look back and, and see the work that's been accomplished, uh, thanks to your support and the support of the community. So tonight, um, I'm going to, um, the, the report that I provided talked about the projects that we've completed. We're giving you an update on some of the projects that are underway, and then those that are sort of on deck, getting ready to get started. To start off with, of course, the big item is, we just opened up Harry Todd Park. It, it was quite an effort to get that project accomplished. It, we really did some new things there, um, to make it accessible, added new elements that hadn't been seen before that are definitely lacking in the city system. So we're excited about that, and the community's been very positive and responsive. Um, we are gonna be dedicating that at National Night Out, which is on August 3rd. The event's gonna be from 3:00 to 6:00, with the dedication at 5:00. And that'll tie in really nicely with your, um, interest in heading to the other sites, the other sites that are gonna be, um, set up throughout the community. So you'll be able to come and do this, um, and then move on to the other things. And, and we've got lots of fun things planned, and partners to recognize, and, um, some more to come on that, but just mark your calendars. I think they're already marked, so. Dedicating the Harry Todd Park. Yes, on the National Night Out. We thought it was a great two-for-one, three-for-one, actually, because, uh, we'll be able to celebrate the site and, um, and all of that. And then, um, I'm gonna touch base on a couple of other things. In here, under Completed, Springburg Park Acquisition, those are those three properties that were adjacent to Springburg Park. Uh, the final property was finally purchased. And I did say here that all of the properties, all of the structures had been removed. If you've been out there, the big green building is still there. The reason is the contractor has decided that they're gonna donate it to a nonprofit group that does a youth rodeo, uh, in, you, I, I can't exactly remember, it's in Eastern Washington. So they're gonna be taking it apart, so we're giving them a little bit more time to do that, but it's not gonna affect our future development of the site. So, uh, just so that, you know, if you saw it there, it's, it is coming down. Um, another project I just want to touch base with on, the one that is completed, is our Fort Silicon Park All Abilities Playground. I have a photo here for you. It doesn't do it exactly justice, because it's a really cool site. If you haven't been out there, it was previously the toddler area. And this site is the first site we've used as port-in-place process. That's the blue, it's kind of like a river that runs through the area. It's really squishy if you're on there, but it's fully accessible. It's got some cool things on it, like, uh, this merry-go-round, which, you know, they haven't, we haven't had merry-go-rounds for years because they're considered not safe, but this is flush with the ground, and it's accessible, you can push a wheelchair on it and do some fun spinning. It really does spin, too. But I just wanted to give you a heads up that there were a couple of issues that were, came up, that we're gonna be bringing forward to council with your consideration, is, is that, um, we're gonna need to do a contract amendment for the company that installed it. And the reason for that is, is that, um, while we were out there, we wanted to, to reuse our swing set, and we were not able to do that. You can see the swing set right there. We're able, we weren't able to reuse it, so we had to purchase a new one and get it installed. There's some big boulders that are right next to the playground, if you've seen them. One has been, one and a half of them were, um, had been broken. They, they were donated many years ago by a family that lost some children, and so there's some real sentiment to that. So we had them repaired and reinstalled. And then we needed to do supplemental wood chips for the accessibility, because the area was enlarged. So, we're gonna request a contract amendment to that project, and, um, so that we can finish those things. And then the, the project expansion portion of it, we purchased this property at the end of 2020, and in February, the code changed, and we needed to get a building permit for our playgrounds, we haven't done that in the past. So it required extra engineering, it required extra footings and things, and then we now have to do a new access from the parking lot to it. So it's a new, um, extra effort that needs to be done. It's an all-access playground, so of course, it's important to do those things. It's the most-used playground in the city. But we'll, we'll be bringing that forward for council, so that we can just make sure that we're following our contract and purchasing procedures. And, um, if you're open to that, we'd be putting that on our, your next council consent agenda. But I just wanted to give you that information in advance. Those resources would be available through the CIP project, under General Fund, and then when you do your budget adjustment, it would all be included in there as well, if council's fine with that. The next thing I wanted to focus on is American Lake Park, our Waterfront Access Master Plan. When we were, um, designing this, again, we did a very extensive community process, but we looked through the records, um, through our meeting notes, and I realized we hadn't really brought the master plan to council for review and approval. We'd done it through the park board, and we've talked with neighborhood groups, but I want, we are, we the park board and we've talked with neighborhood groups. But I want, we are, we did this master planning process in conjunction with when we were working on the legacy plan. So there was a lot of good public input. And we were really getting a design to be eligible for the grant cycle that we just went through, which of course, we were very successful in. So the planning process, but we just want to make sure you're fully aware of all the exciting things that we want to do. And then I'll touch base on a few extra things we might be doing as well. So the goal of this master plan is to be improving about three acres of the park. So the area that's, this is the total park with the boat launch and the area that's outlined in red, as well as the, we'll be replacing the park sign up there at the top. But that's really what this project is about. It's making the park accessible. Similar to what was the problem at Harry Todd, there were, it wasn't ADA accessible. This park is also, the waterfront is not ADA accessible. And anytime you go to make an improvement of a site, you're required to bring it up to code. And it's just the right thing to do anyway for this site because of course, there's such limited public access to water. So you all are pretty familiar with American Lake Park. So I just showing you there that it's up on the north side of American Lake. We'll be making upland and waterfront improvements. So here is a little arrow, oh, there you can see. So the upland area is here. And of course, this is the waterfront. So the idea is we'll be making these improvements up the top, getting people to the bottom. So the real need is of course, accessibility. And I'm pushing the button and it is not moving forward. There we go. You know that if you've been to the park, you can get around the top pretty okay. But when you need to start heading down, it just stops right at the sand. It's quite steep. But you do see people are using our waterfront area with limited mobility. So they usually need some support to get back out of there. Oh, my goodness. I must have pushed so many buttons that I just was having a hard time catching up to me. So but anyway, we'll jump back here really quick so that you can see what we're planning to do in a real brief way. Cause I know covering a lot of ground tonight. So part of the need is of course, accessibility. We talked about that. This is a very challenging area. It's got a bunch of benches there, but you have to be able to get up and down a big terrace to use like utilize that area. And of course, those are the stairs from top to bottom, which again, doesn't provide mobility access. Another issue that's kind of a problem is we have this big old restroom building right at the front of the park. It totally blocks the view to the water. The picnic shelter, which used to be the lone picnic shelter, was right on the backside. So anytime you wanted to go to the restroom, or you wanted to go up in and out of the parking lot, you're walking through any private events and activities that are there. And it is connected right to the bathroom. It does create safety issues because you can't see on the backside of it. It does make it a little harder to access. We have some aging infrastructure. This is the retaining wall holding up the uplands. You can see that could use a little bit of repair. And then you can see it is bowing a bit. This is the, the retaining wall that is on the, the far, the side to the right would be the ADA accessible boat launch. So the current plan is to take this area on the left and create this area on the right, which of course is difficult to see. So I'm going to show you up close. So there's four major components. One is the entry plaza and sign area at the top. And to show you what we're going to be doing there to highlight that, we'll be looking at get rid, removing the old restroom building, kind of creating a better access and entry plaza area, open space area, and then moving the restroom over. It'll be a prefab structure, easier to access, easier to clean. And it'll be moved away from just that central spot. So you'll have a really nice view from the parking lot into the park. Good for folks visiting as well as for anybody that's doing maintenance and/or public safety that needs to keep an eye on what's happening there. The playground has been replaced. So you can see that's not really highlighted in this picture. And the other thing that's been great is, is that pathways from the street have been created where there used to be those bio swales. If you go to the park now, you just have to kind of go from the parking lot and go through a big wet ditch to get to the playground unless you walk through the one little narrow opening. So all of that is way more accessible now. The second area is of course, my goodness sakes, the second area. I, well, I guess, hello. Well, that's an improvement that we're going to take advantage of because we were able to do that with the last project. I'm going to do this very slowly so you can see I'm going backwards. So the third component or the second component is the viewing area and that's the upland area. And so this is where we're going to be installing a new picnic shelter, gathering space. It'll be a smaller shelter, but it'll be another place for folks to gather. And then with interpreted signage and also some benches so that people can really enjoy looking out at the water. A lot of people do utilize the park for view, viewing, photography, et cetera. There's a lot of wildlife out there. So that's kind of a nice improvement at that upland area. And it'll also create access down to the beach. Third area is of course, the main thing that we really want to accomplish is getting ADA access to the shoreline. And so you'll see this area here. If you look at that, the pathway will be coming from the entry plaza, utilizing the grade and the scope, slope going around our, there's old growth forest and important oak trees there that we'll be keeping and protecting, just as we were able to do at Harry Todd. And then we'll get people down to the waterfront area and eliminating that little terrace area and just creating more of an open space so that you can get all the way in the front to the edge of the beach. Now, we're still kind of deciding how we're going to deal with this area right here. Because of some of the safety issues that have been coming up at the park, we're really going to take a look at this and see how do we access this dock? There might be ways of having us access this and giving kids a way of jumping into this part of the swimming area versus what's happening now is jumping into the boat launch. So that's not, wasn't considered as part of this, but will be considered when we start doing our construction drawings. So we'll be cleaning this area up, but providing more access and safer access for people. And then the last thing is the boat launch and the beach access. That is just really, of course, getting people into the water. And so again, we'll be looking at those access points and making sure that it's safe and also accessible and solving some of the safety problems that we have. So that's kind of the boat and access point. And then of course, as we said, that we were able to take advantage of the Veteran Street project that we were able to have updates done to the parking lot. There's still some trees that need to be planted. But that sidewalk and access was, is, was great. And it was help as match for our grant as well. Not true match, but it was a selling point. And then of course, our, our mural is done. If you haven't been down there to see it, it's really fantastic. And so it's on the backside. And just so you know, we had kind of a big tagging situation at the front end of the park several weeks ago, and they didn't touch the mural. So hallelujah to that. And we found that in the past, we had a mural there for many, many years that the Girl Scouts had done. And people really respected it and kept it there. So keep your fingers crossed. The next, so are there any questions about the American Lake master plan? All those things we're doing? Again, we utilized this plan for our, for all the different grant presentations and it was effective and needed and successful. The second project that we're going to be getting started in, which is another one of our big projects coming forward is our Wordslake Park project. Me or you had mentioned something about doing some work in the northeast side of Lakewood. Really, this is, Wordslake right now is, is the only space that we have. And the city's been, it's really a fantastic place. If you haven't been out there, it's amazing that it's, you know, the freeway's on one side and there's really densely populated areas and apartments and mobile home parks and housing. But it's really a special place. And so we really want to do some development there to make it more accessible, but also to, you know, our, our big theory is if you bring positive people in doing positive things, you can take away some of the negative things that might be happening there. So by the end of this year, this park will be about 36 acres in size. Right now, the city owns about 26 acres and we've slowly since incorporation, utilizing many different resources, purchased this land a parcel at a time. So you can really see it's carved out and it's going to be a legacy space for the city for future years. So it's really great and can really provide that safe, open space area. There's three biomes there. I'm not going to go into a lot of details about that, but we've got wetlands, we've got forested areas, we've got a oak prairie area, as well as natural areas. And we did go over the master plan with you at another meeting. And so I think you're pretty familiar. But I just wanted to let you know that those properties in yellow are being worked on right now with the Conservation Futures Grant, the property lines. The city's asked us to do sort of a boundary line adjustment and get it all into one big parcel versus right now, it's in about, I don't know, 12 or 13. So we'll clean it all up and get it one nice big space. I just want to remind you that the master plan include three phases. And so the grant that we're working on right now is going to be for phase one, which is this area right here. So I'm just going to go back again and show you so that you're familiar. This is, the red area is phase one, the yellow area is phase two, and then phase three is really the current park area now. And the reason that that's phase three is, is that it's doing okay and that we want to do these improvements throughout the park. And then by the time we're done with all of that, we can come back and, and, you know, redo the playground. It'll be up to, to need to be redone, fix the picnic shelter and all those current things. I am going to make note that we've received a lot of grants to do phase one and we're really thankful for that. We should hear whether we get the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund, which word on the street is we will. Right now, we have the State Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is a $500,000 grant. We can either get that one or if we're given the federal one, which, right now, I'm having a little bit of a mind blank. It's either 960,000 or it's 780,000. It's one, but it's, it's a bit more. And of course, if we have to pick between the two, we will pick the higher one. But we just found out from the state that they have just announced the federal process for that, the one that we just, the legacy plan that we applied for, that we're still waiting for contracts on, or we're waiting to find out if we actually get it. But they've made, they're announcing the next process. So I said, should we reapply? Because if we don't get this grant, then we want to be in the hopper for the next time. And that's when they said, well, it's pretty clear you're going to get it. But anybody that has a Land and Water Conservation Fund open grant is eligible for a second phase two grant. So we're finding out right now if we need a resolution or if we need permission from council. But as always, we're always looking for additional resources. The good thing about being able to have phase two funds while we're developing phase one funds is, is that we can then put all of that information into one construction package, which is what we did with Harry Todd, as you recall. We had phase one and phase two, and we were allowed to do both at the same time. It was much more efficient. We were able to do it. They gave us the timeline, timeline on the first one to connect to the second one. So again, with consensus from council and we would determine if you needed to do something as official as a resolution. And it works. On our behalf, we'd like to have permission to move forward with requesting funds for phase two. Again, if we're eligible and that works. And we would bring that forward for you next week at your council meeting as well, if we need to do that, unless there's any objections. But then just to go to the phase one, just so you know what we're planning to do is to, this is. I don't know. But anyway, it's to come into the park. It's to do a loop trail that would get you through the park with a bridge over the water because people like loops. We'll be adding an off-leash dog park there because there's nothing on that side of town. And also people, a lot of people bring their dogs to a dog park and they walk them in and they walk them out. So again, that activity is really positive. Doing the pump track up in the top corner off of the parking lot so that it's really easy and accessible for families and kids to come and use that. And then doing some restoration on the trails throughout the, the area that's there now. Because the, the development was about, oh gosh, 15 years ago or so, the main development on those trails. And we've done lots of improvements, but it'll be doing kind of a restoration of those trails throughout the park, limbing up a lot of stuff, clearing it out so that it still feels very forested and natural, but we can see through it and we don't have so many hidden spots back there. So that's the Wordslake Park project. Those are sort of the big things that we have happening. Just to give you an update, the pavilion technically is done from construction. We've been using it for day camps. We started July 6. We had our first church rental on Sunday and there's lots of groups in line wanting to utilize it for various reasons. We're working on just assessing access, number of people, noise, how that we don't want it to impact the rest of the community while their private people are doing their activities. So it's a work in progress. And there's still several things we need to do to sort of pretty it up inside. The main things are done, but there's, you know, we, what we did is we took a bunch of wood that we found in one of the old barns. We had it milled so that we could use it for kind of decorative walls. And so we're going to be doing that to frame some things out, you know, build a table, wrap the mirrors, things like that. I mean, so those are things that we're going to do as we have time and we move through this next year and add a rug and, you know, that kind of stuff. Pretty up a little, the bat, the toilet's flush. Yes. And I have doorknobs and doors now. So I was really excited right before July 1. That was the big deadline. So yes. So anyway, it's working well. And we're, you know, we're looking at, there'll always be an attendant there, a facility attendant, because we want to protect that investment and just make sure that people are learning how to use it properly, that we're learning how it can be used. Our first concert in the park is this Thursday. So Night Wave, 80s music, probably some of the best music in, you know, era. Well, we have, this is a small group, a smaller church group that wants to do it every Sunday. There's another church group that wants to do two events where they can play music. But it's still private. So we're not going to let them blast out to the community. So right now, it's a couple of church groups. We have a wedding. We had a birthday party where they just, we knew we didn't have occupancy. So they just rented the front of it to do their birthday party because they play out there and they wanted to do a birthday party. So, you know, people are getting excited about it. And so, you know, I just know that there's been lots of weddings and things happening around, that venues are packed because everybody moved forward a year. And then, you know, there's a whole new set of people who are in love and want to get married. So venues are really busy. And so we see that area wanting to be used.
How sure, how is the inventory of old wood in the barns?
We got a lot, we have lots of it.
You followed up with Dave Betts about that? Because he seemed to think that there was a lot of value in there.
Yes, he has, yes, we did follow up with him. It was really hard to find somebody that would mill it because of the nails and things that are in it. We did, the person that did it for us, I think, broke a few saws. I think we bought a couple saws, but we figured it out. And we found the right pieces and we were able to, to, to work with it. But we really, really worked hard to try and salvage it. And so we'll have a little, we haven't put signs up yet, but there'll be a little plaque that lets people know that this was restored from old barns on the site.
Yeah, my recollection though is what he, he indicated that the value in it was sale because it can be used for credit in green buildings. So for lead certificate, lead certification, if you, people are looking for that wood, it says worth like three times what new lovers were.
Well, right now, I'm sure it probably is as well. But we also want to protect. There you go. There you go. That's right. And that's the other thing is, there's a lot of old wood in there. And so we can take a look at what might be salvageable for sale that might contribute to a project. And then also what we might want to use for, because the other thing too, is when you're looking to restore a barn, then, you know, utilizing some of those old materials is also gives you a little credit if you have to put in all new windows that, you know, might not be historic. So we're working on that too. But Dave Betts is on the team. He's in fact, the chair of the, the advisory board working on that, that project. And so he's fully aware what's in there. And he does know his wood. You're right.
He doesn't sell it anymore, but he's got some good contacts.
But I did list a lot of other projects. Did anybody have any questions about anything specific? I wasn't going to go over, over every single one. But it's always a work in progress with us. We've got lots happening and lots coming and things that have finished.
Be nice to have staff put some plantings out there like they used to have the first year. Looks pretty.
Well, we, we did have lots of plants there and there was some vandalism where they were being pulled up every week. And so we have, yeah, there, some angry people are angry. And so we do plan to, because we were able to purchase it with some of our emergency COVID, we, we have this sort of black wrought iron type fencing that will be defining the area. And so the staff really wanted to, even though I think we're going to end up doing it before, the staff really wanted to get that fencing up before we started putting flowers back in there just to maybe, I mean, eliminate some of that. But, and we did salvage some azaleas from the, from the Nyanza gateway that was removed. So we did salvage some of that material that we'll bring down there too. But we'll pretty it up. Yeah, it definitely, I mean, they. Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And we also want to put some big baskets. I mean, we want to make it pretty and we have the folks to help make that happen. We just are doing it, you know, we don't want to do it three times. We've already done it twice. So.
You have the ability to have cameras up there for watching.
We have cameras on the inside.
How about in the exterior to watch naughtiness from.
Those cameras don't help us very much after the pack. So, but we're, we'll do our best and we'll, we'll do our best to make it pretty, especially for this Thursday.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Lot going on. See Chief Zorro patiently pacing in the background. And we'll now move to a review of bodyboard, the bodyboard camera proposal with Chief Mike Zorro.
I am. It's right there. Yep. Thank you, Mayor Anderson and council members. What I'd submitted was a proposal to expand our camera program from just in-car cameras to add. from just in-car cameras to add body worn cameras. The proposal you saw was for 80 body worn cameras. That's for everybody in a uniform position. And then a bank of them for non-uniform folks who might happen to go out or need to go out for something where it would be, you know, say a tactical team or something like that that would need that, that tool. And it would give us a couple extra. And it's for a five-year service agreement. That's why the, the amortization was over five years. And what that provides us is all the service. It provides us replacement cameras and tech support, which what we found with our in-car cameras is that's, that's critical because there's been times where there's been compatibility issues with our servers and the in-car cameras. And being able to call them and work through it has been easy. So continuing that would be, or having that with our body warrants would be critical as well. The, the dollar amount for the equipment was about 350,000. 250 of it was for the cameras and then 100 was for the server. And that was, the, the server needs were identified by our IT folks. So that wasn't anything that, that I came up with. But our IT folks evaluated and said that that's what they would need to make it work. And then there was also the, the personnel costs that are associated with the work that goes with having a body worn camera system. And you'll see I included the associate city attorney or prosecutor and then a public records specialist. And the public records specialist is obviously for PDRs. And the associate city attorney or the prosecutor. And this is based on talking with the chief up in Kent and our own internal folks about what they anticipate needing and then what Kent has found that they needed. And with the prosecutor, a lot of that workload comes from an increased discovery time and having to review a whole lot of video that would have to go out for discovery. And then PDRs are, are just PDRs. They, you know, we, we get a lot now. We'll get a lot more once we have body worn cameras. And that, that video takes a little more attention for redaction because with in-car cameras, the majority of the time, it's in public areas. So you're not as concerned about redacting people or anything from the videos. With body worn, a lot of times you'll be inside somebody's private residence. So there's that, some of the privacy issues that you'd have to, or in the extra considerations that you'd have to go through for, for disclosure and redaction. So with that added workload, we think it would easily require an added prosecutor and a public disclosure person. And the, the, the costs are, were included in my memo for that and that would obviously be ongoing costs. The company Coban is who we do our in-car cameras with. And we also currently do have two body cams. I don't know if you remember, our two motorcycle officers have them through Coban. And the nice thing about going through Coban, one, it's just adding cameras, more cameras from the vendor we already use. And they would, they would integrate easier or more seamlessly with the in-car cameras than some other vendor and their own proprietary software. So it's, I just think kind of an easy selection for, for that. As far as funding goes, we do have two possibilities. And originally, my, my plan was for the 23, 24 budget process to propose something then. But there has been some financial opportunities, I guess, or funding opportunities that have come up that I think warrant at least examining it or talking about it, doing it sooner. The first being ARPA, I think there is some ability for us to spend ARPA money on a program like this. Maybe not on salaries, but I think on, on the equipment possibly. The other avenue is through the state and we've been told by AWC that the state has allocated $20 million total for the implementation of the police reform legislation that just went through. Now, one of those bits of legislation was mandating of electronic recording of all interrogations of juveniles and felony adult suspects. So with the increased requirement for electronic recordings, you need the equipment to do that. And it kind of, you know, makes it sort of an easy attachment for the, the body worn camera system to be funded by that money. And if it's done on a per capita basis, I think Lakewood would be looking at about $240,000. I think it was about four bucks a person is what the amount came out to. So.
Something.
It is. So two pretty significant chunks out of the, the total dollar amount that we would need to spend. We, obviously the ongoing expenditures would be something we'd have to, you know, budget for going, going forward. But that's where we're at and that's, was the proposal that, that I brought in. The next step, we, we don't need to enter into any new agreements because it's with a vendor we already use. So the next step would be if, next Monday night, if you approve it and vote to move forward strictly because of the dollar amount you would need to, then we would, we would march forward. And that would include a recruiting for the two positions and contacting Coban about getting the ball rolling for the, the acquisition of the equipment.
And if we implemented this and that time schedule is correct, that we would be the, the first force in Pierce County to have both dash cams and body cams implemented?
I believe so, yes.
What's been your experience, Chief, with the two that we have in terms of public records requests? Has it been that significant or not?
With the two that we have, it's, we've had some. It hasn't been overwhelming, but it's just two. And I don't know how, how many people are aware that we have them. But once word gets out that we have them, then the, I anticipate the requests going up.
And the, my understanding is the guilt has already been advised of this initiative.
I've, I've had ongoing conversations with them and it's been interesting to see the, sort of the pub, the general sentiment amongst the officers turn over the past five to six or more years from, you know, being viewed as a tool that's used to get them into trouble as something that they want to keep them out of trouble. And to show that they're, they're doing things right. So that's, it's been just kind of interesting to watch, but that's where they're at. And we've been discussing it with them the entire way.
Isabel.
I just wanted to speak to Deputy Mayor. Public records do go up, I found, that we found in my other place that I go to every day. And they're, actually we're hiring, I believe, somebody else to, to take care of that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, and I'm certainly in favor of moving forward sooner rather than later. I think that the, the chief and the officers' current viewing is right. You know, I, I certainly get much, many more communications from citizens complimenting officers than I do complaining. And I think that this is, this is going to be something that will, will reinforce the, the good work that, that is, that is, that is done by officers in the right way. Okay. To be able to go and do it as opposed to social media characterizing how they're doing it. The one, my one concern about the proposal is, is that I'm, I just like to see some more specificity about what ARPA funds would be used. Because we've sort of divided the ARPA funds up into a couple of categories. We have the ARPA funds that are going to be the replacement of lost city revenues, which is going to be, I think enough, more than enough to absorb this. And then, but then we will look at another set of ARPA funds that we're currently in a public outreach model to determine how to best help the community and, you know, in a, moving to a post-COVID recovery situation. And I, I would want to be sure that we're going to use money that's in that first category. That's money that we're going to replace into the city's general fund essentially based on revenue that we didn't earn in 2020. And it's, was, was viewed to be, you know, a couple of million dollars, which would be enough to, 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 to fund the ARPA piece of this, I think. But I wouldn't want to do this and take it out of the community resiliency piece of ARPA dollars that we were looking to, to use, you, you use for that. Because this is a city operational expense, even though it's a big one.
I think the division can be decided at a later date. We'd scalp it out now. Take the opportunity. This is a farmer.
I was curious about the server. Do we have, I apologize that I don't know this. Do we have physical onsite servers for the rest of our IT operations? So we would just be adding another one? And then do we back up to the cloud or do we have a, a physical location that we back up to?
That's, that question I'll have to follow up. I know that we have priority or we just moved a bunch of servers to the police station for the whole city as a primary. So it's more secure. And Ken White was looking at an off-site location as our backup. So a combination of those two is where the, the videos would be stored and then have a backup for it.
Okay. For emergency planning, they usually put a physical server and then you have a backup across the country or some crazy place.
Yeah, right. What are the, yeah, one of my criticisms of South Sound 911, that's we're going through this, is their redundancy was local. And I had a history of working with financial institutions. And if, if you're the, you know, the Bank of America with a headquarters in North Carolina, your backup is in North Dakota. It's in a different disaster zone.
Exactly.
And here, the state's primary backup is actually because they're the big internet connections in Spokane. So they're at least on opposite sides of the state.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'll give you the, a very recent example. Some poor redundancy was our recent internet outage that was born out of our primary line and our redundant line being put on the same pole that melted in the fire in Tacoma. So I know that Ken White is very well aware of a proper redundancy and just paid a, a price for someone else's failures. So I, I'm confident saying that Ken be on top of that.
Thank you. My second question is, what happens after five years in funding and ongoing?
There is, what's built into the, the proposal was a replacement fund. So every year, we'll put so much into the replacement fund to keep the program going at the end of five years.
For the equipment?
For the equipment, yes.
And then the salaries?
Salaries is something that we would have to address during the budget process.
Mr. Wilkie. Random question, Chief. Does the, the, everybody using body cameras now, does this give another free source of material for all the commercialized cop shows that are still out there, interestingly enough?
Oh. So what you're envisioning is somebody.
Cops.
Yeah, cops. Well, yeah, filing public disclosure requests and using the video for entertainment purposes. I, I suppose if it's open to public disclosure, once it goes out, they can do with it whatever, whatever they want. So I, I guess that possibility is out there and I see our city attorney might have a different opinion.
Limitation on commercial use.
There is a somewhat unenforceable line in the public disclosure exemptions that you are, when you ask for your public disclosure, you're supposed to affirm that it's not for commercial purposes. However, the chief is correct. You could give it, you could give it to you and you're not asking for it for commercial purposes. Once it's with you, it's public, right? So somebody else could get it anyway. It's, it's hard to enforce, but the Public Disclosure Act tries to discourage commercial benefit from the disclosure.
So there's copyrighted. No, really. You copyright it, then you comply with public disclosure. And if somebody tries to use it for commercials purpose, you get an injunction. So they owe you the, they owe you the money for using your material. Just because it's created for the public doesn't mean, you know, the, for example, the federal government copyrights and trademarks things all the time just so they can control the scope of its use. A good example is the military logos of the White's backyard. They can't be used for commercial purposes without the, the permission of the government.
Interesting idea. Yeah. We'll get them.
None. Not here. It's an investigation.
It's, it is currently under investigation. And I know, I'll tell you, our detectives are working on it. We are extremely grateful that nobody was hurt. But we'll do what we can to find the people that were involved. And if there's something we can arrest them for, we certainly will.
Are there any other questions on the body cam issue? So this is docketed for next regular meeting.
Next Monday.
Very good. I commend you for bringing it forward promptly and Lakewood being a leader and to the members of the force for adopting change graciously.
Well, one of the things I was reminded of in researching the information for this is we, I looked at our first agreement with Coban and it was, goes back to 2010, I believe. So we've had some, you know, that's when our in-car cameras started. So we've had some version of, of cameras in the field for a while now, not counting cops.
So, and I, and I remember, I remember when it was first instituted, not just here, but other places anecdotally, it, it increased pleas in DUI cases substantially. Because they, yeah, you show the, you show the video to the defendant and their defense attorney when they're sober and they have a different attitude.
For sure. All right. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Short break. So we go to the reports by the deputy city manager.
My report is very brief. I just want to remind the city council that the group photo that is scheduled for next Monday at 6:30 PM, right before the regular council meeting. Mary already spoke about the Harry Todd dedication that will occur as part of the National Night Out event that will be held on August 3rd and will take place at Harry Todd Park from 3:00 to 6:00 PM with the dedication of the new improvements at Harry Todd occurring at 5:00 PM. Some upcoming events on Wednesday, July 14th at 10:00 AM. We have the change of command ceremony for the Joint Base Garrison Lewis McCord. Colonel Sky Duncan will relinquish his command to Colonel Philip Lamb Watkins at Watkins Field, JBLM. And then on Tuesday, July 20th at 10:00 AM, the 627th Air Base Group Change of Command Ceremony between Colonel Patrick Sullivan and Colonel Patrick Hall will occur at the Hangar 9 Barnes Boulevard at McCord Field, JBLM. And then already have the National Night Out on August 3rd. And then on September 18th, we have the 25th anniversary of city incorporation at the Colonial Plaza from 2:00 to 8:00 PM.
Any questions for Ms. Kraus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. How would the dedication and the National Night Out work out? Like if we have to be at Harry Todd Park at 5:00 and then we're supposed to go out with, to all the different National Night Out locations with police? I just was wondering how that coordination would, you're looking that way.
And I'm looking at Mary Dodsworth, who might be able to speak to the National Night Out and how the events will occur between 3:00 to 6:00.
Oh, no. The question was just, how would that work with all, each of us I know are going out with, on National Night Out with the different, I believe, the different police? And then if we need to do the dedication also, like would we leave from there? I just was learning logistically.
Yes. So how, how our event will work, it's from 3:00 to 6:00. Drop in, we'll have some fishing activities and we're going to the rowing club out there to do some rowing, maybe rowing, the real cruise games, activities, free river floats. the real cruise games, activities, free root beer floats. But we'll do a real ceremony. Hopefully, the mayor will be able to attend, and we'll have a real ceremony, invite all the legislative people. So most of the National Night Out events aren't starting until 5 o'clock throughout the community. So that's why we would do our dedication at 5. And then you could go right from there if you wanted to, because in the past, I know that you've gone with police officers or with fire folk to the different sites. And sometimes they divide and conquer. Sometimes you've been able to hit many. I'm not sure how they're coordinating that this year. I mean, I remember back in the day, we had like 80 some events, and you guys were just running everywhere like crazy. But so what so I think the police department will help coordinate that. And then they'll like, like, maybe you'll go to two or three events, and the mayor might go to two or three events. Because you want it. I mean, you're not able to hit everything in that short period of time, and actually spend some time with the people. So so I think that's how it'll work. And you can leave right from that side, as long as you get back by 9 or lock your car in the gate. So we'll have to coordinate that. But that's a good question.
Any other questions? I have a kind of a chink in the armor here on the picture. I'm on a plane to DC for Association Defense Communities on Monday. Yeah, before we before they cut and paste the head, maybe they can just use my old one. What? Well, that's what they did. They did the group picture, then you got to choose your headshot. It was pretty weird. They paste it. I was gonna say my body double. And yeah, maybe move it another week. There you go. All right. All right. And for the questions, move to council comments, Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That I did attend the Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting that they, one of the things at the meeting was a great many comments about the sidewalks and along veterans and how they are doing. Some, but but some concern about that the speed of vehicles that are heading in the direction of the VA hospital. Vehicles going the other way, people seem to think we're doing that. But people late for appointments or whatever, that seemed to be a problem. And they 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 asked to have that have 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 that looked at. So they were going, but they are their meeting was on Zoom. But next month, they will begin meeting in person on that second Thursday at 7 PM at the fire station in in Lake City. So that that was was, you know, moving along well to be able to go and do that. And then, Mr. Mayor, I didn't know, I see that on the proposed meetings for next month, next month, that they have approving the SSHP, I don't know how to insert the three in there, the ILA on the consent agenda. And we didn't really get any feedback yet on whether they made any adjustments or things based on their coming here and talking with us and having a conversation with us. And I really sort of like for that to not be on the consent agenda so that we could get some, at least some feedback about did it, has it changed or done done any edits? And we can then have that discussion about, because the question is still out there, is this a duplicity of items that are that are that are that are scheduled to or being handled by other groups before we before we go ahead to do that?
It's been sent out to all jurisdictions. Did you see the copy? It's been sent out to all jurisdictions.
I did not see it, but I may maybe so. But anyway, I'd rather it not be on the consent agenda.
Well, anybody can remove something from the consent agenda. So. Ms. Moss.
I don't have anything to report. I just wanted to ask a question. We had talked about having a group picture taken outside or inside. Do we want to reintroduce ourselves to that? We had talked about having it done in front of this monument out here.
Well, they usually hang every time the council composition changes, do one and hang it in the hall, which in our old law office, I used to call the Wall of Dead Heroes.
And the other thing.
As soon as we got a female partner, that we didn't do it anymore.
Forget I said that. The other thing I was gonna remind everybody that for the National Night Out, make sure you wear your name tag.
I don't have one.
Forget it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It'll magically show up.
Thank you.
Ms. Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment on the horrible incident that at the park for the drive in. I had some friends that were there that frantically texted me while it was while things were happening and asking questions. And I am very grateful that they did get a response, because they had sent some other emails and were not getting what they needed. So they got a response, and they appreciated the refund and just the acknowledgement. I think it possibly, obviously, the communication that went out on it may have could have been a little clearer and a little more prompt. But I'm glad that it did go out eventually.
Mr. Bulkey. Well, I'm just over here eating. I I know, I guess the common period for Western State Master Plan is open for another few days. And I'm hoping that they get a lot of comments. The comments I'm sensing on social media is that they're very concerned that as the civil side closes, they're just going to put them into Lakewood. I don't know how we make that part of the master plan. And that's beyond my ability to to figure out. But it's a genuine concern. And I think they're right to have that genuine concern, that it just becomes, hey, let's, you know, open 30 more homes and and get these these folks here. I don't know how that gets addressed. But I but I just note that that is now, the concern seems less about the buildings and what's going to actually happen on the campus and more about where those civil commits go. And I think we need to understand that about how that's going to work and what our rights are. Agree. Ms. Farmer.
I did want to mention that as we frame and message the body worn cameras, that we not rush to a blanket message of, gosh, we're first to get all of these tools, because apparently we have issues here in Lakewood, so we need these tools. So I just want to make sure that we're framing framing that carefully. That's all I have.
I think the one of the messages you're getting going to get from other places is officers in some departments resist it. So I think in that messaging, it should be that our officers embrace it. Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments on the Pierce Transit side. We selected tonight a new CEO for Pierce Transit. It's Mike Griffiths, who is the current COO. And it was a long process, took a long time, several months with a consulting firm and lots of interviews and staff interviews, employee interviews, and all that sort of thing. So we're very bullish on that. And I think he'll be a good fit for the ABC. There were some good candidates that came through. I attended the farewell sort of meet and greet for Colonel Duncan, Sky Duncan and his wife Victoria last week. Very good folks. We will miss them. Had a chance to talk to the folks at the air wing there about maybe reinvigorating the civic leaders tour. And they're interested in perhaps doing that. And so we should maybe follow up on that when we get a chance and see if we can do another joint meeting with the air airbase folks and JBLM folks. I know it's all JBLM, but it would be nice to get the leadership together again now that COVID is somewhat over. I can't attend PCRC this Thursday. If someone can do that, that would be great, because we've got so many other things going on. And then finally, on the park incident at Fort Silicon Park, and of course, we know the one about American Lake Park, it makes me cranky, to say the least, because here is a safe place for families and and kids. And we have invested millions in the parks, and we have people who don't give a darn. So we have to figure out, in my humble opinion, a way to either have an enhanced penalty, you know, thou shall not bring a weapon to a public park signage or something like that. And if you do, whatever we can do in the criminal code in Lakewood, it may be beyond that. I know this watcher's taking a look at it. But we need to do something to send a message and to put some teeth into whatever criminal sting we can create out of miscreants who come and do dumb stuff in our public parks. And most of these people are probably not even from Lakewood. Who do this junk? That's the thing that's irritating to me. Don't mess in our playground, you know, your junk. I'm sure. And it is unacceptable.
And it's, yeah.
Absolutely unacceptable.
People cruising in who to a park that's otherwise closed, except for the event, would be there for another purpose. Yeah. Although there are state limitations to case law, and those SEC judges that limit our ability to limit weapons in park.
And bring back capital punishment.
So tomorrow morning, Bright and Shiny is the last virtual copy with the mayor. We're gonna announce that we're gonna do it in person after tomorrow, which is nice. Thursday is the Change of Command at the Garrison, which is mentioned earlier. And and I'd like to address, make an invitation to the News Tribune. It would be inappropriate to comment on the endorsements themselves, but the article in the endorsement, that's something right. Lakewood's doing great. So you got to change. I know that I know that McClatchy is really strapped for cash. They've gone bankrupt. They fired everybody. They have limited staff. They sold their building. So they haven't had the time to invest in investigating Lakewood and finding out about our community. They're concerned about renters and imply that somebody has to be financially strapped and renting to be represented on the council. We had an award winning rental housing safety program. If you look at some of the most challenged neighborhoods, if you look at Springbrook and and Tillicum, Tillicum, we used stimulus funding to jumpstart over 30 Habitat for Humanity Homes. Show me one other community that can tell you where any of their NSP dollars are today. I'll wait. I'm gonna be waiting a long time. And show me another community that's created two urban parks at a whole cloth, Wordslake and Springbrook, that even exist. While you're looking for that again, flip News Tribune away, because you can't tell me that. We put more money into curb scutter, sidewalks, and streetlights, various neighborhood programs. So when we do equity in Lakewood, and we have a lot of things that we need to improve on, but we've done it through action and using our money to address those needs. There's an implication that serving in the military is somehow negative. And the I don't know that they realize north of 56th Street that JBLM is generating over $10 billion in economic activity and over 50,000 jobs a year. The Department of Defense is the largest employer in the state of Washington. And they have to have a rudimentary understanding of what they do and how they interact with the community in order to effectively govern. And on the other side of that, I think we have three of the last four liquid mayor of the forever liquid mirrors, the immediate past and present Silicon mirrors, the immediate past and present DuPont mirrors, two of the last three UP mirrors, and the mirrors of Ordin, Edgewood, and Tacoma are all veterans. So that might indicate that leaders in Pierce County are assisted by the military in developing those skills. So to say you shouldn't have or imply that you shouldn't have military and should take economic disadvantage and make that a qualification for community leadership is, I think, quite uninformed. And so I'd invite them to come out and get to know our community. We won't, in my lifetime, I hope, adopt the policies of Seattle, Portland, or San Francisco. We're different. And we have, I think, enhanced the quality of life for the folks that live here, and hope to continue to do that. With things like the rental housing safety program, preserving housing, things like making the neighborhood safer, things like giving their children place to play if you're cooped up in an apartment. I think those are all very important. And we're a barbell community, but that doesn't mean that we can't look out for each other and get along. So come out and visit us, News Tribune, find out a little bit more about how that success that we've had wasn't an accident. And by the way, best economic, the best social program that exists is a job. And it comes along with, we create them here, comes along with a lower need for transportation. We don't need fancy trains if if we're working in our own community. So you're welcome anytime. I'll be here to greet you. Anything further? We're adjourned.